So I just wanted to start tonight's meeting with a moment of silence for Mr. Jim Gallagher. All right, and then just offer our board members an opportunity to say anything about Jim's passing if they wanted to.
Let me.
Okay. So his wake was last night and his services were today and the Recreation Department has some registration dates approaching March 7th for Medifit, March 13th for Zumba, March 24th for Adult Pickup Games, April 1st to be guaranteed an event t-shirt at the Grafton Gazebo Road Race. The Springs Women's Softball has three spots left and seasonal positions are now posted. Visit graftonrec.com for job descriptions to apply. And please join the Select Board for Lunch at the Grafton Senior Center on Wednesday, March 29th at 11:45. Those who are interested may reach out to the Town Administrator's Office or Senior Center with any questions. The event flyer is included in tonight's meeting packet. There are no public hearings and the first up is a Council on Aging Lori Gerard. Lori, I see you're joining us by Zoom.
Yes, I'm here. Hi, how are you?
Hi. Now, I know you're in a rush and I thank you for joining us this evening. Did you want to just tell us a little bit about yourself?
Um, so I've lived in town my whole life. Um, I've worked on Meals on Wheels and done some volunteering for the Senior Center in the past. And I had seen that they were looking for some help with the birthday celebrations and I offered to help. And um, after talking, it seemed like there was this position available. So I offered to help out to try to get some more seniors into the Senior Center and help them with, um, you know, getting some services that they need and just knowing what's available to them.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Does the board have any questions for Lori? All right, hearing none, I can take a motion.
I move the board vote to approve the appointment of Lori Holden Gerard to the Council on Aging.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, declare the motion carried. Congratulations Lori and thank you again for joining us this evening.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Up next is Darcy Pulsonelli for an election worker appointment.
I move the board vote to appoint Darcy Pulsonelli as an election worker for the town of Grafton.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, declare the motion carried. And we have the Assistant Finance Director Christina Alward as appointment.
I move the board vote to affirm the appointment of Christina Alward to the position of Assistant Finance Director.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, declare the motion carried. Uh, first, we have road closure request from Grafton Recreation Road Race and I see Jen Anderson is joining us in Zoom. Hi Jen.
Thank you. Hi.
Tell us a little bit about the event.
Uh, yeah, so this is actually the 32nd year of our road race. Uh, last year, we reformatted the route um, to go from a five mile to five K to try to increase participation and it actually worked. Uh, and so instead of running through the common, we're running kind of around the common in front of uh, kids on the common pediatrics and the congregational church. And uh, and so in order to have like a water stop there and be able to have a little spectator space and runner space, um, last year was the first year we requested to close that section and we are looking to do that again.
All right, great. Does the board have any questions or comments for Jen? All right, hearing none, I can take a motion.
I move the board vote to approve the 30-minute road closure beginning at 9:45 a.m. on Saturday, May 13th, 2023, of the Grafton Common from Millbury Street to Church Street as requested by Grafton Recreation.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, declare the motion carried. Thank you so much Jen. Uh, up next is the annual music entertainment license for MJ's Market. Uh, do we have anybody here for that? Okay. Uh, does the board have any questions or comments on that?
I do. Have a way on the, all up to date with them?
Uh, no, but we're navigating that. This uh, is a repeat license that should have been on our annual in January. But we missed carrying it forward as an automatic renewal, so uh, it popped up in March for us because that's when they were issued it last year.
But are they up to date on everything else?
On everything that, that they owe us? Yes. Uh, because the host money is now in flux and so we're working with the Cannabis Control Commission and Council on that status. I think that's going to be a universal conversation that we're having with all cannabis dispensaries moving forward.
But other than that, they're all up to date with everything?
As far as the 3% tax and all that stuff, property tax, absolutely.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Do we know if they plan on doing any um, Sunday hours?
I don't believe so.
Okay, it didn't really specify in there, but I mean, it was the only day that the hours of operation that they listed for the bands would be out of, out of scope, so. I move the board vote to approve an annual music and entertainment license for MJ's Market.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, declare the motion carried. Uh, next is a one-day beer and wine license for Apple Tree Arts.
Hi, that's me.
Hi. I don't know if your name's right on Zoom.
No.
Okay.
Um, I'm Brandon Lewis.
Hi, Brandon.
Hi. Um, so we applied for the license for an event that we're hosting on Saturday. Um, we're doing a concert with the band The McCree's. Um, and we just want to be able to uh, sell beer and wine. We've done several of these types of concerts in the past. Um, so we're pretty excited to be having this event.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I can take a motion.
I move the board vote to approve a one-day beer and wine license for Apple Tree Arts on March 11th, 2023.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, declare the motion carried. Congratulations and I hope you have a great event.
Thank you.
Up next, we have election update with the town clerk. Hi Candy.
All right, so I got a couple of things with you. Um, but the first thing is um, the update. So as we know, legislation keeps passing and some sticks. So there's a few things that the board has to consider um, for May. Uh, and one of them being um, mail-in voting. We would have to opt out if we did not want to offer that with, which would be um, 45 days before the election, which would be March 31st, which would entail a public hearing and then a roll call from the board. I met with the registrars um, a couple of weeks back and told them that that seems to be the driver for people to vote is mail-in versus early voting. And they were in agreement with, you know, whatever I thought was going to be more of a um, voter turnout. So um, I said to them, that's what I was hoping to do. If we wanted to do early voting, we would have to opt in. So I'm just here because the board would have to um, vote to, to opt um, into the, the um, opt out of mail-in voting if we didn't want to do that. And I just wanted to have that conversation to see if there was something that you preferred over the other.
So you're saying that mail-in voting increases voter turnout and you support it?
Yes.
And we would have to vote to opt in?
Opt out.
Okay, so we're already in?
We're in it.
We don't have to hold, but we have to hold a public hearing for it?
Yep, if you wanted to opt out. So it's ultimately, it's the board's decision what you want to do. So early voting, it had to be recommended by at least two registrars. And then you'd have to vote on that to um, opt out of mail-in voting. You would have to do a public hearing and then have a roll call as well. So we're just the final steps of, you know, we'd like to stay with keeping the early, um, the mail-in voting and not do early voting. And just do one option being the local election, seeing how mail-in voting seems to be the driver for most people voting anyway.
Okay. Kind of just a point of clarification. So if we do mail-in voting, we cannot do early voting?
You could do both, but at this point, being a local election, we were saying that, you know, it's, it's, it's a lot more cost to have people come in to cover early voting. And we're going to get more people to do the mail-in versus offering both. So we kind of talked saying it's beneficial to do one, focus our efforts on one, just because of, you know, what it entails for the office. So that's what we're hoping to do is just stick with the mail-in voting and not do the, the early voting as well.
The last local election, what did we do?
The last local election, I think we were mandated to do um, last year, we actually didn't um, I actually have it here.
I think there was early voting.
Yeah, no, we did. Um.
And mail-in.
Yep, we had to do both because they mailed out stuff to everybody. So I did do that. So we, we did have a good turnout um, with the mail-in voting last year. Combined, it was about 4,000 or so um, ballots that went in and out. So that's why we were saying we'd like to continue doing that.
And how many early voting?
Um, for last year was about 950 or so, give or take.
Do you know what the cost differential is?
I did not look into that, no. But usually, I want to say early voting, depending on hours and changing, it's a few thousand dollars to pay. Everybody, depending on who works and like I said, hours and, you know, with um, like your September, November elections, we're mandated to have like two weeks weekends, so it ends up costing more obviously. Then a local, they were a little more flexible with that and let us do our own hours, so.
So just worry after several years of doing early voting, I think a lot of people might have gotten accustomed to it.
I get a little confused though, too, with early voting. We offer it here and then they come here on Election Day. So I mean, it's, we'd have to have two board members recommend it as well. So we'd have to have another meeting. And the good thing about that, and I wrote, so you have to vote no later than five days before. Early voting, which start, would start, which would be um, 17 days before, so we have until April. But that's up to you. I'm just thinking that, you know, it's easier to do the mail-in voting. But ultimately, it is, you know, your decisions as well. What does everybody feel?
I mean, I'm in support of doing as much as we can to get folks out to vote so that we know that, you know, their voices are being heard. So I understand there's additional cost, um, but I would prefer to do both, mail-in and early voting. Particularly, as Colleen said, that now there's been a number of elections where we've been doing this, not just local, but federal. So it does get a little bit, and actually barring that even, I still would be in favor of whatever it takes to get more people out to polls.
So I feel like it's um, really important to be consistent between elections so that people have the same experience, no matter what, they're going to fill out their ballots for. So um, I'm in agreement with Emery. I think we should do everything that we can and 900's no small number. Um, so I want to promote any, any opportunity to promote people getting out to vote, so I'd be in favor of both.
That's fair. Sorry, you just, you have a hand on Zoom, just so you know.
Okay, does the board have any other comments before I?
One question. Um, do you have any issues with staffing poll workers for early voting? Is that, is that an obstacle?
Um, it's, no. It, I mean, I have to send out stuff and whoever's available will work. And I think it's going to be more a question of hours too. That's going to be the next um, you know, point of reference, I think I'll have to have with the um, registrars. And, you know, um, we tend to find people, but we might have some internal staff. Um, you know, challenges coming up, so that's another reason for this as well. So, you know.
As far as dates go, when, when would we, we would have to hold a public hearing before April 1st?
Before um, so 17 days before, so five days before early voting would begin. Um, yep, so April 29th through May 12th is when the early voting hour of dates could be. So we have.
So before April 29th, so 17 days before that plus five?
17 days before the election, so it's April 29th.
Okay.
Is when.
All right, so we have plenty of time to, to make that work as well. That's.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's what, yep, yep.
Okay. Okay.
So I will contact the registrars, let them know you have to have recommendations from at least two, which we will have right now. Um, and then we'll have to have another meeting to do a, a roll call from, from you.
Okay. Uh, I'll see who, who was on Zoom that wants to?
It's Marilyn C.
Okay. Hi Marilyn.
Hi, Marilyn Crusher, 3 Lincoln Lane. Um, I have been doing early voting um, for the last several elections and it works out really well. And I would be very, very unhappy to see it stopped at this point. It's something that I prefer doing even more so than the, the mail-in um, with some of the troubles we've, we've had with that. So um, you know, I agree with um, Anne Marie and I, I can't see who else was talking, but I agree with both board members who are in favor of continuing um, early voting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Um, so to continue the early voting and the mail-in voting, do you need, what motion do you need from us tonight?
Um, nothing right now.
Okay.
So the only other thing I want to um, get clarification on as well is police officer, officer coverage. We had one per precinct um, for November and it cost us about $7,600 when it usually costs us about 1,800, 1,900. So what's your thoughts on coverage for May?
Why did it cost so much?
We had one per precinct versus one per location.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
You don't have a problem?
With the, with the one per precinct.
Okay, me too. So that means you can have multiple officers in one location?
Mm-hmm.
Do you think you need that?
I don't think we need one per precinct. I think if you wanted to do two per location, which would, you know, if one wanted to take a break, there'd still be another one. I think that's actually more reasonable than, you know, five.
Yeah, I'm okay, because I mean, it, the high school there or middle school where, that's three precincts right there. So that, that seems like a, a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm okay with the two per location if everybody else is okay with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, I think that's it for now.
Do we need to vote for that or?
No, that was just, you know, what you guys wanted to do last time and I just wanted to confirm before I said something out to the, the chief and everybody in the next coming weeks, what we wanted to do.
All right.
All right, I think that's it.
Nope.
So I will see you.
Your, one more thing, a vote to update the open seat on the local election. So it's the next agenda item.
Mm-hmm. So um, as you're aware, with Jim's passing, there is a vacancy on the um, Housing Authority. And we are looking to add that seat to the ballot, which if we were going to do it, we need to vote tonight. And that would just be for the remainder of his term, which I believe was what, 2025 or 2026? I can't remember.
26.
Exactly, yeah. Um, so I believe you have the motion to do that. And if you vote tonight to do that, we can have um, re-announced that that seat is available and have people start pulling for that as well to be on the May ballot.
Okay. Does the board have any questions or comments about that? Nope. Okay, hearing none, I can take a motion.
I move the board vote to direct the town clerk to add the vacant seat on the Grafton Housing Authority to the list of open seats for the annual local election on May 16th, 2023. The term of this vacancy expires on May 19th, 2026.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, declare the motion carried. Um, well, can we make sure something gets on the town website about not only this seat, but all the seats that are available?
We're going to do that tomorrow. I think I was going to send you once we got the vote. All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, have a good one. All right, up next on the agenda is the CMRPC Regional Housing Coordinator Program and Fiona is joining us via Zoom. Hello Fiona.
Hello, how are you, hi members of the board. Thanks for having me. Um, so this uh, opportunity presented itself to me um, from CMRPC. Uh, it is a regional housing coordinator position that will service the towns of Auburn, Berlin, Grafton, Shrewsbury and Mendon. It's a really kind of a pilot program that'll be no cost to the town um, for fiscal year 24 to provide staff support and assistance, really um, technical assistance for um, housing-related issues. Um, the job position has not been posted yet. CMRPC is planning to post it in March. Um, so we'll, so essentially um, I'm requesting this evening that the Select Board approve, um, entering into this agreement for the first year and based on progress, we can evaluate um, continuing, working with um, this potential hire in upcoming years. Um, the, the uh, staff person, once they are hired, will probably be working for the town about four hours a week and will probably be working closely with the Affordable Housing Trust. Um, and given all of um, the activity that's going on in Grafton, I think this position could be really valuable um, for the town and, and for uh, myself and the Planning Department and for the trust. Um, so, so yeah, so essentially um, I have been the designated um, member, advisory member uh, to CMRPC for this. And I am planning to address the Affordable Housing Trust on Thursday evening, requesting um, a vote to designate an alternate unless um, somebody on the Select Board is interested in filling that position. But yeah, other than that, it's um, it's really a kind of, as I mentioned, a pilot program for the first year and then we'll kind of evaluate their, their progress and we can um, reassess in the next fiscal year. If this is something that we want to continue, but I thought it was a valuable program that CMRPC is offering that I think would be nice for the town to take advantage of.
All right, great. Thank you. Does the board have any questions or comments for Fiona? Just a question on the towns. So those are just folks who reached out to CMRPC that were interested? Like, do they, who do they throw this out to?
My understanding is that CMRPC um, sent out an email to the, all the towns in the region and these are the towns that responded.
Okay.
Yeah, so this started when we were sans planner and um, I did the first initial two meetings. Basically, they just sent out something to all the towns in the catchment and said, are you, are you interested in this? And I sat through a couple and then turned it over to Fiona. Um, so as Fiona was saying, year one, it's no cost. There's no real risk to us. We're getting four hours of basically consulting talent, time uh, for a uh, housing coordinator, which should, the idea is to be more regional and not so much hyper-focused on just the one community, know what's happening in other communities as well. Um, but I, I don't see the harm in us taking a stab at it for year one. And then if, if we don't like the way that it's headed or it doesn't um, live up to our expectations, we can always discontinue our participation for the next fiscal year.
Great. Any other questions or comments?
I was having trouble um, figuring out like to what, to what end we join this, really. Um, because reading through it, to me, it felt like it was, it was more geared towards um, newer planning boards and, and housing trusts. Um, whereas ours are pretty well-established and it felt like there was some overlap in here. Um, and all these towns are working towards the same affordable housing goals and mandates from the state. So I don't understand whether there'd be an opportunity for cross-collaboration, I guess? Or where that sharing of information helps out or what we're really, what are we getting?
So Fiona, can I jump in on that?
Yep, absolutely.
Um, so I, I don't think it, I wouldn't think of this collaboration. Um, you know, we're not going to talk to Shrewsbury and say, hey, we have a development that wants to go over here, what you want to take it? You know, that's, that's not really what we're talking about. What we're talking about is the, the general knowledge base of this is what's being built out in Shrewsbury. This is what's being built out in Millbury. This is what now a developer's coming to Grafton, well, they're doing this project and this project, right? It's that kind of holistic knowledge of what's happening in the area of towns that are similar to us. Um, I think that the, the benefit that I think of when, when I talk, when I think about this program is, is more human capital than anything else. So we have um, you know, whether it's the, the trust, the planning department, um, you know, we have these projects going on and we need data mined. We need to know what's happening over here. We need to, you know, I, I think that they are human capital for us to then say, this is what we need to have happen and they can produce that product for us. Um, because as you know, our, our human capital here is a little thin. Um, and so that was really, that was really our impetus for having that conversation. Does that make sense or did I just say?
No, it does. Um, what, so I mean, we're, we're also shopping, or are we still shopping for an assistant town planner?
We are not. So um, Fiona and I uh, made the decision moving into fiscal 24 to consider, uh, continue down the road of using a planning consultant to augment Fiona's hours. So Fiona being brand-new, it seemed like a poor choice to then, while Fiona is getting spun up, give her someone to train on also getting spun up. Um, so we felt that the um, the consultant that we've been using, uh, who has, I think, 30 years in the planning realm, um, you know, she's a wealth of information. Um, so we figured we'd bolster those hours for fiscal 24 and then fill the seat uh, for the assistant planner in 25. Um, I will also point out that we advertised it a number of times last year at our current pay rate for assistant planner. And uh, we only had one, uh, up until we posted for the full planner position, we'd only had one person uh, apply. We offered the assistant position actually at this exact same time that we hired Fiona and that person turned us down due to pay constraints. So um, again, a lot of words, but uh.
Yeah, I mean, it, it also sounded like they were looking for a multi-year commitment. You know, not just to try it out for 24 and then bounce. So we have any concern with that or where the funding sources come from in, in future years?
Um, no, I mean, I think that if we got what we desired out of it, we would, we would sign, we would continue on for the remaining two. And if it's not working, you know, there is language in there of how we can exit the agreement.
One more question, just I'm curious why so many towns then wouldn't have opted in? If it's, you know, like you said, free personnel essentially for a year.
I honestly don't know.
Right. You know, there's like some sort of downside that isn't apparent in, in this.
Not that I saw, I mean, I, I, the, the town that we're most closely affiliated with in that list is Shrewsbury. And it seemed that uh, they were of the same mindset that we were of there being a little downside and, and you know, the upside being that we have some human capital there to, to maybe get some, get some work done that we're not otherwise able to complete.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I can take a motion.
Sorry. We don't have. Um. I move the board vote to join the CMRPC Regional Housing Coordination Program and do we need to authorize the chair to sign?
Oh.
No, it's just a vote.
Sure, I did not realize you had your hand up. Um, so we just had a motion partially made, but no, did you second it, Ray?
No.
All right, yeah.
Hi, uh, my name's Adonaro 20 Christopher Drive. I, I don't quite understand, uh, Andy Jefferson commented on it a little bit, why you would need to do this. This is a government agency or it's blessed by the state under a mass general law? It seems very circular to me. What would this organization do? For the planner, for the town?
And the way I was reading it earlier, I don't know if I can just jump in, was we have four hours a week of free label, labor for a year. I was curious why others, you know, weren't jumping in. If there's something else that we didn't see, but.
So the construct is an advisory board that sets the direction for the, this resource. Um, so I think probably our planning department would identify areas where we need some human resource. Um, and coordinate with the other um, members of the advisory board to direct that, that resource to work towards those ends.
But Fiona, the project's on our slate already.
Yep. Uh, Fiona, maybe you could talk to that a little bit.
Safe harbor pretty fast. I mean, what's the point? What, what would you need them for? And they're only going to, this organization apparently is pro 40B, pro affordable housing. What could they possibly tell you?
You mean.
They don't show you the other side.
You mean CMRPC in general?
Yes.
No, we do tons of stuff with CMRPC, literally every week.
Okay.
They're a regional.
Just give me an example of.
So they're a regional planning organization, so they give us technical assistance on the master plan. They give us technical assistance on basically almost every plan that the town touches. They provide technical assistance for.
And do you indemnify them in every one of those areas? Because they are apparently indemnified. Because they are apparently indemnified against any future lawsuits or anything like that.
Do we indemnify them?
That's with this agreement. I thought I saw it in here that you have to.
Under the normal town umbrella, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, every community in the Commonwealth is under a regional, like this is CMR PC. Western Mass has PVPC, there's the metro version, there's the Boston version. The state has set these up throughout the Commonwealth and and all of us use them as a resource.
And and they don't, they're not really like pro forty B. They're just pro helping towns navigate forty B. But they're 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 not an organization that says we need to do more affordable housing. They help towns navigate the existing regulatory environment, like they did our open space.
The town will be exposed to possibly another approach. Because let's face it, this is coming down like a ton of bricks from the federal government, the state government. And how do you, as the board, town planners, see the other side of the coin from an agency like this? I just think you'd be better off with an outside consultant.
Which other side do you mean?
The other side of, you are in safe harbor at this point. You don't have to approve every single one of these projects that comes down the pike.
Sure, well, here's one way to think about it, maybe. We are in safe harbor, that's new for us. We're not sure, at least I'm not sure, and I've been thinking about this a lot, how we navigate this safe harbor situation? Do we work with developers to try to keep in safe harbor? Do we just say no to everything now? You know, how does the select board work with ZBA to signal the projects that we think are good? Which ones we don't think are necessarily good? Do we want to be intentionally saying no to projects with the understanding that at some point we're going to fall out of safe harbor and then we're back to forty B? There's a lot of, there's a lot to it. An organization like CMR PC could help us if we choose to direct them to say for this resource, hey, why don't you go find out that other towns that have recently gone into safe harbor and see how they've navigated these waters? Like, who are the good developers? How do we evaluate these lips versus forty Bs? And, you know, what are the good strategies for navigating this this whole process? I I don't know, but that's the type of thing that CMR PC, but they're, they don't have a horse in the race as as far as any of this stuff goes. They just help towns do what towns want to do. So this advisory board is just going to say, hey, help us with X, Y, and Z. And this resource would do that. So I don't know, Fiona, maybe you could talk about some of the things you would anticipate that we'd use, it's only four hours a week, but what what kinds of stuff would you think about?
Right, absolutely. Now, I agree with your assessment, Matt, I think that that was a really good summary. I think that it would be the this person, you know, there would only be four hours a week, as you mentioned. But just really kind of helping with educating, kind of networking with other communities, seeing how other communities are are tackling their affordable housing situations. I'm offering education workshops, help with engagement, really technical assistance for our trusts and housing committees and boards and volunteer groups, really helping, you know, it's really more of exactly what we were saying. It's kind of like a support role. And I think that the 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 best use of this person's time would be really helping with research and analysis and kind of assessing how the region is evaluating their affordable housing situations and how Grafton can improve and learn and and benefit from from these types of conversations. And I think really technical assistance was kind of my my immediate thought was how we could really like utilize this person and their skill sets to 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 benefit Grafton. Yeah, again, I don't think, you know, CMR PC doesn't have a stake in this at all. They, as their, as our regional planning agency, they offer the assistance with planning of all types, housing, economic development, open space and recreation, so on. So this is just another another example of a program that they're offering that communities can can take advantage of.
So Ed, just one last thing, here's another example I thought of just as Fiona was talking. We have this MBTA zone requirement, right? It's new for all of us. That's the state saying for the towns that have, you know, infrastructure for transporting, you know, passengers into Boston to to work and whatnot. You've got to have a certain amount of acreage with a certain amount of buy right density. That's new for all of us. So CMR PC is working with every town that's impacted that by that. And they would be able to help Grafton understand what all the towns are doing to make the MBTA zone, to comply. They would let us know all of the new guidance, because the guidance is evolving over time. Because they wrote the regulation and then, you know, how it actually in practice gets rolled out. So they would help us with stuff like that.
Well, I could see that, but I think there's an absence of creative planning, because everybody will just go in the same direction. You have a government sanctioned agency by a Massachusetts general law, okay? And you have the state with what you just pointed out, the Uber laws, I call it, or the MBA, MBTA law, you know, within a half a mile from a train station, et cetera. I just don't see that, and then the budget for it, you know, the numbers. I think, are you meeting with the finance committee?
Well, we're voting for it.
Whatever, I mean.
Voting for no budget.
I know the first year, and I hear from Evan Young, the first year, we don't have to pay for it, and then we can cut it off. But if you observe, you know, government, whether federal or on the local level, after a while, these things don't get cut off. They just move in and become part of it. And I I just don't, I I would I would hope that you would turn this down. This is a critical time in our town. I think Bill Yeoman, if I'm pronouncing his name correctly, listed all of these projects. We're inundated, we're absolutely swamped here, okay? And I think he brings up some really good points. But to say that CMR PC is going to help, I believe they're just going to quote state law. And as far as what all the other towns are doing, from the towns that I saw listed, they're exactly going along with it too.
I will say yes.
And and I understand that you're saying, well, what are you going to do? You know, property owner buys the property, you can't tell them what to do with their property. But there's no, where do you pick up the creativity? Where do you pick up the insight? Because maybe there are some things you can do. Instead of just basically saying, that's it, we're stuck. State law, it's federal law, that's the end of it. So that's all I have to say on it.
Thank you. Emery?
Yeah, I forgot what I was going to say to Ed, but I was going to offer Fiona, just because this is an area that I need to learn more about, to be the alternate, if I know that you mentioned Affordable Housing Trust, but I did notice on here, select board member as well, so, or could be that person. Just throwing that out there.
Don't we have a CMR PC representative? Wasn't that you for a long time? Or is still you?
Oh, so never mind.
That's different than this technical advisory committee, though, and I'm happy if Emery wants to do that, go for it.
Thank you, Emery.
All right, would you like to make a motion again, Amy?
Who's going to sign this? You or the, are we authorizing Fiona, Evan?
Just authorize me, if you don't mind.
I move the board vote to approve and enter the CMR PC Regional Housing Coordination Program and authorize the TA to sign.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? I oppose, declare the motion carried. Up next is change order number thirty for the Grafton Public Library, the CTA Construction Managers. Andy, would you like to, or Will?
Yeah, I can talk about it. So this is the change order for the barn doors at the library, at the maker space that we've been talking about on and off for a couple of months at this point. You'll notice that we got a credit in there for the relocation of a humidifier unit that was going to be in the historic documents room on the second floor. The unit that DRA and CTA specked out no longer fit when the room was completed. So we got a credit back for that. We've already ordered a different unit, we're just waiting for that to come in and have that installed. But so the total cost of the change order is five thousand two hundred and three dollars and sixty-nine cents to get the doors ordered, manufactured, and installed.
Any questions or comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Will, at the bottom, PCO one sixteen twenty-five thousand fifty dollars?
Yep.
So that is the barn door option, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so this total change order is five thousand two hundred and three dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Yes.
Is the work done?
No, no, this is the change order to order, to order the doors, get them in, get them installed.
Okay, so this was, this was this was dated in December. Is this number still good?
Yes.
It is good.
So it was, the change order was produced in December, it was signed by CTA on February, uh, signed by the architect on February ninth, signed by CTA on February fifteenth, and we got it a couple of weeks ago. But just because of the way things shook out, this is the first meeting where the board has met where we have had it.
Okay. Do you, and by the way, you're doing a great job on this, working all of this out, not on, not only in this change order, but on this whole project.
Thank you.
Do we expect any more change orders?
No.
We don't, because I just wanted, I just want to say this, and then I'm going to put it out there. The original contract sum was ten million eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars. The current contract is thirteen million, three hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-eight cents, which is two point five million dollars in change orders on a ten million dollar project, which is far above the construction percentage of of a job, as far as change orders goes. This is eight percent more than what we originally, what what we originally voted, not voted on, but originally contracted it. I just wanted to say that, it's not your fault, so don't look at me like that.
I'm lifting intent.
It's not your fault. I just wanted, I just want to bring up that there are two point five million dollars in change orders. I personally don't want to see another one, although in my opinion, not all the work was done for a building that we paid thirteen million dollars for. There are items missing that were never put into the project. Now, let me get this straight, they were never put into the project, but that building should have. So I'm not overly, I I wasn't involved in this in the beginning. I think, I think I appointed the committee when I was moderator. But I I just think that this has just not been a good project for the town of Grafton. That's it.
Any other comments?
We, the library building and planning had kind of been waiting on this change order. And back in our December, February sixth meeting, they had said roughly six weeks. So are we starting, does that clock start now, because we're officially cha- signing the change order?
Six weeks for the doors?
Yeah.
Yes, that is my understanding.
I mean, I just wanted, you mentioned it, but the HVAC, do we have a rough estimate as to when that installation is going to happen?
The humidifier should be delivered next week.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
I move the board vote to approve change order number thirty to CTA Construction Managers for the Grafton Public Library.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? I oppose, declare the motion carried. And I do want to second what Ray was saying, you're doing a lot of good work over there at the library, thank you. Up next is the opioid settlement option.
Yeah, so this is similar to the other opioid, other opioid opt-in that we did. And this is just with different defendants. So we're able to recoup some money out of the original settlement. This is a successor settlement, but I think we'd also recuperate some money out of. And we're able to park that money in an account that we can then use for either educational programs or community offsets to, you know, substance abuse in the town of Grafton. So I would recommend that we opt in like we did on the previous settlement and see what we end up with.
Any other questions and comments?
Move the board vote to opt into the proposed settlement agreements with the defendant CVS, Walgreens, Walmart, Tiva, and Allegren.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? I oppose, declare the motion carried. Up next is the Snow Road Local Initiative Program. We have a couple guests here this evening.
Yes.
Yeah, bring it up.
Hello, how are you guys?
Good.
Good. So we had a copy of the contract in our packet and we were reviewing.
Okay.
And I think we do have some discussions the board members wanted to bring up this evening.
So so let me just get right to it. Because I think you guys know that that's how, that's how I do things. So we had discussed the AMI a while ago. And and you, you guys came back to us and said that there was nothing you could do about it, about the AMI. But the board feels that that we should get a sixty percent AMI on ten percent and eighty on fifteen.
Say that one more time.
Thirty percent on sixty percent on ten, ten, ten percent and eighty on fifteen. So it's a total of twenty-five, but twenty-five percent. So it's really the only thing we need to discuss.
Okay.
If you, if you guys agree to that tonight, I think the board is, it would be in favor of authorizing the the signing of the lip contingent on changing that document and with the chairman to sign at a later date.
Would it be okay if I make a quick phone call? Just my uncle Steve, that sounds like a
Kind of friend.
Kind of friend.
These are these are Shark Tank rules, got to make a decision right now.
Do I want to make a decision?
We're about to say no.
We can move on and do other agenda items.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you don't mind, just go.
First life.
All right, so now we can, we'll just pause that, come go to purchase, it's sale agreement of seventeen and twenty-seven Upton Street.
Yeah, I don't have a lot to update the board on, it's a lot of lawyers back and forth. We continue to do that. I'm hopeful that we have a proposal for you all at your next meeting on the fourteenth that you can then either accept or not accept.
Proposal to extend?
Yep, yep, in talking to counsel, that's really our our next step is to, we have a request to extend. Then you need to vote whether or not you're going to do that.
So we do have, we do have a request?
We do have a request.
How long to extend?
We're not, we're not there yet, so.
Okay.
We're going to put together a package that I can then give to you as a board that you can then deliberate on and, yea or nay, change terms. We're trying to get down to some of the things that have already been brought up, which is if if we did extend, how long total, how long for, you know, we'll call it a check-in period? What amounts are due when, so we're trying to get down to brass tacks so that we can then give you the list of what we were able to get to and see if that's agreeable. And if not, then we're going to adjust it based on your feedback or or not, if you decide to just not do it at all. But that's really, I I I think in our best interest to see what we can get before we decide to go out, back out to RFP, which is.
What's your best gauge on when that would be ready?
My my goal is to have it for the fourteenth. So our goal originally was to get it for the seventh, but we we just fell behind on that.
So we can throw that on the draft agenda?
Yes, yep. But that's, that's it, it's just been a lot of background, back and forth.
All right, any questions or comments?
No, we'll wait for the draft.
All right, thank you for the update, and moving on to schedule dark station visit.
Yeah, so this is me also. So this was something that Matt had brought up at a previous meeting. And so I wanted to extend a opportunity to go and and visit two different locations. One would be a dark station and the other would be a smaller RECC. So I've spoken to, the easiest for me is Munson and Westcom, because those are my stomping grounds.
Want us to drive to Munson?
Yeah, I was actually thinking I'd come pick you guys up, maybe we'll get a van.
Oh, great.
I just got a van.
I know, you just got a van. Soon as I said it, I was like, oh, no, we're going to be in Collins' van.
I know, you just got a van, soon as I said it, I was like, oh no, we're gonna be in Collins' van.
I get castrated.
No, so we would, we would set up a date, head out there, um, if, I thought that, I honestly thought Munson would be a good opportunity because the chief and I there built that dark station from the ground up. Uh, we actually built the building from the ground up before we knew it was gonna be a dark station, so I think he would have really good insight for you folks on what works, what doesn't work, what did we do that he would do differently. Um, and, uh, then I just thought, if we were gonna be that far out, we might as well head to Westcom and
For that part, well.
see what a sm- this is nothing for me, Ray, I'm, I'm, I do this twice a day.
That's your choice.
I know, it is, I know.
Head out to Albany from there?
Yes.
That's right.
So, anyway, pretty much, so, um, but then, I think it would be interesting for you folks that, especially the ones that saw uh, Semrec to see Westcom, which is kind of this transitional space, it's not the big glamorous, you know, uh, bunker that we, we went to, which was awesome. Um, it, it's, they've done a great job with it, but it's a lot smaller and they're managing five, four towns in one city out of a much smaller space, so I thought it would also behoove us to, to do that.
Do they have restaurants in Munson or just Comby's?
They have, my family's one Chipotle.
First of all, we don't have a Comby's in Munson.
No, that's why he eats it out here all day.
Oh, we don't even have a stoplight, so, um.
Grafton didn't have one when I moved here.
Really? Yeah, we, uh, we, we have a blinking light, that if you're from Connecticut, you still stop at and everybody loses their mind. So, we, uh, yeah, I, I just thought that would be a, a neat trip if, if anyone was interested in.
Sounds like a fun trip.
There is a Chipotle in Chickaby right near the Westcom though, so I will buy all of you lunch.
Great, I love Chickaby.
I mean, to me, the, the dark station is the big point of concern that I've heard consistently from, uh, constituents, so that's something that I definitely wanna vet fully, I'd like to understand, yeah, just rock up and see how it works, do a test, um, yeah, and maybe just talk to the chief on how much theirs gets used, how successful it is, if there's anything they do different, you know?
Yep.
And is there any, um, you know, is there any gaps in service in terms of, you know, what residents need versus what they're able to offer?
Do you, would it be possible for us to pick a couple of dates that I can throw out?
Mm-hmm.
That would be
Let's do it.
You need a whole day, cause you gotta
Yeah.
It's a long ride. Lot of ride.
I would prefer not on Monday, I know that much.
Okay.
Are we all going?
I think that's the plan.
Why don't we get a bus?
I think he said that.
Not a van.
Alright.
Something comfy.
Snacks?
It's gonna have to require a taken out.
Oh, I'll take him my truck.
How far are you looking?
Um, I would think, uh, this is the first week, so maybe third or fourth week of March if possible, just to give a couple of weeks, or even that first week of April.
That's better for me.
Uh, yeah, April would be better.
Okay. About Wednesday, the twenty-ninth.
That's, that's not April.
That's not April.
Okay, whatever.
Wednesday, the fifth?
Yeah, that's what I meant. This is one week off.
I could make that work this far out.
Okay, can we do?
As long as we're back before basketball, I'm all set.
Okay. You have to leave it like new, come back, um, so we'll do, can we do Wednesday and Thursday, the fifth and sixth, and let me see what they have? Is that doable?
Oh, you mean, we're only gonna do one day when I do two?
Yeah, but I wanna give them the option, I don't know what they have.
As long as we're, uh, so both of those nights I have commitments in the evening, so as long as we're out by, like, early afternoon, I'm fine with both of those.
I would, I would think we'd be done by just after lunchtime.
Okay, awesome.
And you come back to civilization.
Hey, Comby's.
Great.
Does that work, Emery?
The sixth is gonna be tough, the fifth is, I'm fine, could, if, could our alternate be the thirteenth, it's a Thursday, sorry.
Yeah, uh, uh, did you know the rest of the board?
Till fifth and thirteenth, or we're throwing it for a Wednesday and a Thursday?
Uh, I can't go.
On the thirteenth?
What about the twelfth, do you have availability on the twelfth?
Can't go that week at all.
Oh, okay, and the sixth, I'll, give me five minutes.
Why don't I just try the fifth and if not, I'll send a group email out and you can all get back to me with your supplemental date.
That works.
Cause we have the fifth, so.
It, really, if you can't, if, if, everybody else can make it that week, don't.
No, that's fine.
Okay, let's, let's start with the fifth.
I have a question, um, in getting numbers, is the police station starting to track numbers of like late night walk-in, walk-ins and?
I don't know if they've physically started yet, but they're going to.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yes, cause I know that that's data that we would, we would want, which we would want regardless, cause we need to know what our staff needs.
Alright. Well, thank you for that, uh, select board reports. Anybody have any reports? Andy's not having yet.
Um, I'd like to thank the North Grafton Elementary, North Street School PTG, uh, for inviting me to Community Reader Day last week, and also a big thank you to Beth Foley, who is stepping off the PTG after seven years, this was the last Community Reader Day that she was gonna be organizing, um, it's a, it's a lot of fun, and if you guys aren't all on that list to get out there and do it, I would recommend you do.
Nice. I got the, uh, privilege of judging a Pinewood Derby competition for the categories, which was really cool, uh, on Friday, so, um, I'm sorry that I missed Rick Elaine's, uh, retirement, but it was really cool, uh, Dave Meridian was there, he actually did both of those, which I thought was insane, but, whatever.
We did mention that.
Yeah. I was wor- I didn't wanna be leaving during the middle of somebody's presentation in, in Rick's thing, so, but, whatever. Anyways, it was fun, so thanks so much to the scouts.
Dave's got the clout that he rearrange, he has the rearrange of schedule for him.
Yep.
Yep, he did do that.
That was a lot of fun, though.
Matt would have that clout.
I don't know. I like Matt, I don't know.
That's his job. So I attended the, uh, League of Women Voters How to Run for Office, uh, event they held last week, where Anne Marie was a panelist, and that was pretty well attended compared to the last one I went to, so that was exciting, and hopefully we see some people running for office.
Nice.
I can do the sixth, provided I'm here by four thirty.
Okay.
Fifth is better still, but the sixth
We'll shoot, we'll, we'll, we'll throw out the fifth first.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright. TA report whenever you're ready.
Okay. Uh, so we're just about to kick off our Finance Committee hearings, uh, they start tomorrow, we have a meeting tomorrow night, then Saturday is the full day, and then another Wednesday on the fifteenth. Our cherry sheet estimates got released from the governor's, um, budget, so chapter seventy was roughly one percent, uh, that is not great, that's not what we had anticipated. Um, and the unrestricted government aid came in at about two point seven, which is a good number, but it's also, uh, you know, that's twenty-eight thousand dollars or something, it's I'm not saying it's nothing, but it's not, it's not where we'd wanna see the money, we wanna see the money in the chapter seventy. Um, so with that chapter seventy number, that moves our capacity down to two thirty-three and change. Uh, so I'm working with, with Jay on that, I did meet with the Finance Committee reps for my departments, and, um, you know, we went over our revenue, we're, we're definitely conservative on our revenue numbers, but I'd rather be conservative there at the expense of the inflated, uh, capacity number, than I would, uh, get us halfway through the year and find out that we've overestimated and we're, we're in trouble, so, um, everyone felt pretty comfortable with that. Um, on to uh, our next topic, so this is George Hill Road, so, uh, we've had a lot of interest in this lately, we're getting closer to spring, where we said we would have, uh, some news, and so, we're awaiting our ten percent plan, uh, drawings, we should have those uh, in December and of last year, so, we're meeting with them next Tuesday to try to get uh, the resolve to any questions they have, so we can get those drawings in. Um, and then we have to figure out what we're gonna do to fund the project, so, we do have our initial, uh, anticipated cost of between five million and seven million, depending on, uh, conditions that are found during construction. Um, the only way that Grafton would be able to afford that is to do that through a debt exclusion. Um, otherwise, you'd have to fund it through the road stabilization account. Um, road stabilization is about million and a half a year that we collect in there, and a level debt service on seven million dollars is six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars a year, so you'd lose, you know, half of what you've put aside for roads for fifteen years, which I don't think is a strategy that I would recommend. Uh, if you went the debt exclusion route, um, and these are very, very preliminary numbers, the average household in Grafton would see an increase of ninety-six point five one, uh, dollars per year for fifteen years. Um, that is a snapshot in time, because what we would probably do instead of a level debt service would be, uh, a level principal, and what that means is that, uh, the earlier years you pay more, so we'd be in the seven hundred and fifty thousand a year range, and the farther out you get from the issuance of that bond, the less money you owe, so the last year is only four hundred and fifty thousand. Um, we would do that, cause that saves us close to two hundred thousand dollars in interest over the life of the, the note. Um, so, the next step, um, beyond talking to you folks about this, um, I am meeting with bond counsel to get all of our facts and figures together, to then come back to you and make a presentation, it, it's up to the board, uh, at a future date sometime before April eleventh, to decide whether you want to put this issue before the town on the ballot. Would also need to be on town meeting, so, um, as soon as we have the ten percent plans, we are going to schedule a public outreach meeting, we will hit the people specifically on George Road, but we will also open that to the rest of the community, um, and, um, you know, start talking about what this, what this looks like, uh, timelines, funding, all the, all the bells and whistles, but this is what it's looking to shape up like.
So Evan, you, you said that you're not in favor of using any of the current one point five million that we do in roadwork every year to pay the debt for this. Can, can you explain that a little bit, because, because seven million at twenty, in twenty years is three hundred and fifty thousand in principal, and then your, then your interest is on top of that.
So you can't do twenty years, state law mandates that we can only do fifteen. Um, which is, is why I picked fifteen. Um, the reason that I, I had said, I don't think we wanna use the one point five million for that, um, and, and it doesn't, I guess it doesn't have to be an all or nothing conversation either, right?
Well, I'm not saying use the whole thing, but if we could use a portion of that, so, so fifteen years is four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. You know, throw two point seventy percent on top of that, over that, over that time, and, you know, you're at five, five fifteen, five twenty, somewhere around there. And we have a million five, and just use that, and then, uh, we have to go to a debt exclusion anyway, but we have a resource to pay it back. It, it, so, a- again, I just wanted to know why, why you'd
So I, the reason I wouldn't recommend that route, um, at least at this point in time, is, is twofold, one, because the Department of Public Works has plans for that million and a half to keep up with the roadwork, that's why you, that's why you voted that initially. Um, but my second reason is that I've heard from this board consistently in the last two years that that million and a half needs to be there for road, and I think that's something that we've consistently talked about. So if the board wants to take a different direction on that, I, I obviously, this is the preliminary conversation, I mean, I think we need to have a lot more conversation with, uh, Paul Canoyer about where that money is supposed to go, what he has in the pipeline, um.
But we're also a year away from that, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
In, eh, well, yes and no, I mean, they could start in the fall, you know, it depends on, I don't know what they're gonna propose for phasing, yeah, I haven't seen it. Um, but I also wanna point out, that six twenty-nine figure, that's direct from the Department of Revenue, of what that would cost, fifteen-year level debt service. Um, so if you take, you know, six hundred thousand dollars out of that one point five, that, that's a pretty big dent in what we're doing annually for roadwork. So I, I just think it needs to be considered, whether you do the whole amount, or you do partial, or you do the debt exclusion.
We have, we have an option, so.
Right, there's a lot of options.
A lot of options.
But I think there's more, con- again, the reason I proposed strictly the debt exclusion is to give you the one, cause I think that's what I've consistently heard, and two, it gives you the number of what, what it's gonna, what it's gonna cost.
When's the ten percent plan, uh, potentially gonna be finished?
We're, I, I, any, any day, um, we're hopeful to have it for Tuesday, if not, we have a meeting with them to find out what the final little hurdle is here, so we can get that, and then we can hold a public outreach meeting.
Cause I for sure would want the outreach before the eleventh.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Well, the eleventh is the deadline to get it on the ballot.
Right.
So, I mean, yeah, it's, it's tight, we're working on it, I mean, we don't, I don't have a lot of control over the, the plan.
Can we potentially grab a couple of dates from the library, though, that always seems to be difficult, um, so just find some Thursdays.
That's a good idea.
Um, so we're all teed up to go.
Sure. So that's that. Um, wanna do a little approi- employee appreciation, um, so we have, we received a letter, uh, from a grateful resident re- regarding Katrina, who's in our, uh, zoning department, gave some excellent customer service to a new resident who just moved here and was confused about how things are, and, and she was great to them, I also wanna call out Debbie Jackson, so she's an employee of the, uh, Grafton Public Library, so Beth Schreiber was supposed to read at the North Elementary School Reading Day, and she was unable to do that at the last minute. They called the library and Debbie hopped in her car and drove over there and, and volunteered, so that's really cool. Um, I really appreciated that, um, and then just the building and the fire department, so we got a nice letter from one oh nine Creeper Hill Road, which is feedback earth about, um, you know, they had had a fire at their facility, and just how fast, uh, fire and building worked together to get them turned back around and operational, so they were very thankful for that. Um, other things I just wanna point out, uh, as Andy said, uh, with North Street Elementary School, so I was there as well, uh, to do a reading, but so was, uh, Chief Crapo, Chief Matthew, firefighter Kazupi, Andy, I, I called out Andy specifically, he didn't mention me at all, but that's fine. Um, Sarah Bannister from the Grafton Public Library, as well as Debbie Jackson, I don't think I missed anybody, we had a really nice representation of, of local government, uh, Dave Meridian was there.
Amy Mar was there, yep.
Oh, sorry.
School committee.
Okay.
Yep.
Just perpetuating the school first town thing, we don't wanna do that.
Don't tell Amy, um, we'll, we'll retro, we'll put that in before I put it in the pack.
I, I believe Laura Austin was there as well.
Oh, man, oh, we're killing the schools right now.
Yeah, the school department, I'm in big trouble. That's right, yeah.
Ouch. We love school committee, we, we love them.
I read Cloudy with a Chance of Meatball to some sixth graders who were
Nice.
less enthusiastic than the second graders I did last year. Just staring at me, correcting my grammar, though, which was fun, too, you know? Um, so we are continuing to work on the Stowe Road Bridge replacement, so that road has been temporarily closed, the bridge is in place, um, all the, the abutments are in, the, the decking is in, now they're working on approaches, so we are getting closer to the point in which that can be reopened for traffic. Uh, Westboro Road Water Main Project that we have going, uh, our RFP is finally live, so we're soliciting bids for that. Grafton, uh, after a lot of discussion, we are acting as the fiduciary, so, um, both Tufts and the Grafton Water District are gonna be paying us, and we're gonna be paying the bills. Um, it just works better that way, because we are holding the ARPA funds and releasing, so, since we already have to be the fiduciary for the ARPA funds, we might as well just move that whole project, so their ma- water district is managing it, we're managing the billing, so, um, that's nice, um, I don't have an update on ninety-five North Street, I thought I would by now, but we've had our kickoff and then it's, you know, been snowing. DE and I audit, we have a live questionnaire right now, that's out in all the different departments, and we've been getting some good feedback so far. Uh, we don't know what they say, but we know what the numbers are, and, and we've had some really nice participation, so that's good. Uh, and the ARPA committee met last week, and, uh, we do have a couple of updated, uh, requests, which we will need to put on the agenda for the fourteenth.
And that's it.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
And I believe Snow Road is ready?
Yes.
So, we would just actually ask if, can we continue for two weeks to your next meeting? And we would really wanna like run through the performer to make sure that we can do this.
Okay.
Um, the couple of people that I spoke with quickly, he said, you know, the issue is obviously is, you know, getting it financed, he goes, you know, we have to make sure the performers work in order to, you know, get the project built and find you know, get the project built and financed and, and everything. So I'd rather, you know, to run through that whole performer to make sure that we can do this. I don't want to just say yes and then not be able to, A, get it financed or B, build it. Um, so if you don't mind.
So not next week, two weeks?
And, or do you have another one next week?
We do have a meeting next week.
Oh, you do? Oh, okay.
Do it next week. Sounds like a probably?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
At Grafton, we have a meeting every week.
Yeah.
Chairman requires the.
I love meeting. So I have a question, just, um, I don't know, prior to me being on the board, the numbers were available in terms of your financial numbers relative to this project. They weren't in the first, the packet that we got when I was first on the board, which I believe was in January. So if you have those numbers, um, in terms of, you know, what your bottom line is, um, what you're looking at in terms of what the rentals might be, those types of things.
Yeah, okay.
Just your financial numbers relative to this project would be helpful for me.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, no problem. That's what I'm going to be working on to make this decision. So we can show it to you.
All right.
All right.
Okay.
We'll see you guys next week.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Uh, up next is correspondence. Does anybody have anything in correspondence they want to discuss?
Uh, just throw a thank you to Billy Yeomans for putting that, uh, that document together. It was pretty comprehensive and seemed to take up a, a good amount of his time, so.
He dropped off correspondence too. That was, thank you, Bill.
Yes.
So I was a little confused by the, maybe, uh, not sure how much I want to go into it, but this messaging that he mentioned seemed to be in conflict with what we heard in terms of sewer capacity and so concerns and all of that, so.
Agreed. So Fiona and I are supposed to meet with, um, Mr. Canoyer last week to talk about capacity and to vet our own numbers that we've been developing, um, as well as issue some guidance for the board. Um, that fell through with the snowstorm. Uh, he was unable to make it. Um, Kevin was unavailable and he had to fill in that role, which is perfectly understandable. Um, so we are looking to meet next week to figure out how to present the data and advise the board on, on, on what our capacity is.
Okay.
It's, it's not as straightforward as just numbers on the graph.
Sure.
As I'm talking to Mr. Canoyer, um, you know, an eight-inch pipe has X capacity. However, if it has X pitch, it's different capacity. And so different areas have different pitches, uh, different type of pipe, different size pipe. And so capacity, while the overall gallons remain the same, there's a lot of other factors that play into what the throughput of, of our sewer infrastructure can handle. So. It also changes with our INI work too.
Sure. Um, I guess, uh, individually, um, what I heard was that there were no immediate concerns, um, that maybe a study was warranted. Um, and if that's something that we, um, I would definitely be in favor of pursuing that. It wouldn't help us with the decisions we're making today, but I'm going to, I've been making decisions with the understanding that there are no
Correct.
capacity concerns, you know, expressed by, by our sort of staff.
Yep, and that's, that's messaging that I don't think has, has changed. So capi- capacity is a concern. It's not an immediate threat, right? And so we need to be concerned with our capacity.
Yeah.
Um, and so as, as my conversations have gone on with Mr. Canoyer, uh, part of what we've discussed is, you know, do we, do we make, you know, your, if you're going to do an endorsement letter, is that one of the things that we want to put in there is that you have to fund X, whatever it is that Mr. Canoyer says needs to be done to assess the capacity of that area. Uh, because we have this holistic study, but a lot, a lot of it doesn't get down to the detail of, again, pitch, age of pipe, you know, all these different factors that, that we need to be discussing.
And that stuff's really important locally too, in the neighborhood where these are being proposed.
Right, because an eight-inch pipe might, in theory, have the capacity to handle a, a, you know, a hundred units, whatever it is. But that's only if it has a ten-degree pitch and this one only has a six-degree pitch. And so that, you know, knocks down your throughput capacity. So, um, so we are, we are actively working on it. We're, again, hoping the meeting last week would have yielded something to be able to tell you for this meeting, but obviously with the snow, we weren't able to.
Okay.
I will say that that's been something, I mean, I brought this up when I was campaigning and I brought this up when we were talking about the Eastland Development, that sewer and water and other services had been brought to my attention previous to this. I mean, this is great in terms of numbers, which I'm all about. Um, and if they need to be tweaked, I would love to, you know, know those numbers. But I do have some concerns about this overall in terms of, you know, the numbers of, when, Matt, you asked me at the, one of the, you know, recent meetings, what is the number that I'm looking for? I don't know the number because this is the stuff that we need, in my opinion.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you.
So two sixty-seven, while I have concerns about the density, I have concerns about traffic. I have concerns about the, the extra level on those two other buildings, but I also have concerns about this, fire, police, water, which we haven't talked about, and that's a whole other thing that, you know, different districts and whatnot. So the quicker that we could get information like this or, or at least close to the right number, right, would help us because this is pretty compelling. Not in a positive way, in my opinion. Okay. Any other correspondence? Okay, we have a couple of resignations.
I move the board vote to acknowledge and accept the resignation of Jody McInerney from the Board of Registars.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, declare the motion carried.
I move the board of, uh, vote to acknowledge and accept the resignation of Carmen Dionne as an election worker for the town of Grafton.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, declare the motion carried.
And lastly, and dear to my heart, I move the board vote to acknowledge and accept the resignation of Susan Fiaco from her position as Finance Committee Assistant.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, declare the motion carried. And we have one, one more.
Uh, I move the board vote to acknowledge and accept the resignation of Bill Drago from the trustees in so- of Soldiers and Sailors' Memorials.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, declare the motion carried. And we'll send a letter of thanks to everyone. Wonderful. Thank you. All right, uh, public comment? Somebody online?
You do have one.
All right. So if you want to come up and say your name and.
Over here?
Yes, please.
First time, so.
Uh, hello. I am Kevin Brown, Jr., also known by my nickname as Hailstone. Many of you know me from things I do in the town, the Gra- Grafton Cultural Council, the Grafton Republican Town Committee, Grafton Group. Uh, as Colleen Roy here mentioned in the beginning of the meeting, Jim Gallagher passed away. Jim Gallagher was a good friend of mine. I mean, he was just about a friend of everybody. And I think in honor of his memory, that we should name an unnamed trail, lake, or island after him so that the town may remember him for years to come as a thank you to all the service he gave for his, for our country and for our town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
I think that's a great idea.
Yep.
Um, I had thought about, uh, you know, sometimes we do, um, days, like Memorial Days, might be an option.
Um, you can do both.
Something a little bit more permanent, I think, would be terrific.
Yep.
I think that's a great idea.
So come back with a couple of ideas down the line and.
Sure.
Great.
If anybody thinks of anything, let us, let us know.
Well, we've got a, um, the ninety-five North Street Passive Recreation Park.
Oh.
Be a good one.
Yep. Yep. Yeah, it's funded by CPCs.
Yeah. Right, you're thinking cap tonight, I see. Like it.
You took it off.
What? No, we didn't. You just had a great idea. You were texting. You missed it. All right, we have somebody, uh.
Kids on their phones.
Just always tweeting. Hi, Ed.
Hey, guys. How are you?
Good, all right.
Good.
Good. Just, listen, let me take a second. I just, you know, obviously I, my curiosity was piqued about the housing discussion tonight. Uh, with regard to CRMPCs, a few things that Ed DeNero said, and then obviously, uh, what Mr. Yeomans wrote in his letter. Um, you know, eh, while it's all well and good to thank Mr. Yeomans for his contributions, you know, I'd remind you, he's not a water sewer engineer. And, you know, the contributions that we should be, uh, listening to are those from engineers and professional staff when it comes to services and infrastructure. You know, when you talk about housing, everybody always wants to talk about it in the abstract. You know, we use the word housing for it. But what we're really talking about is the needs of people. And sometimes it's people in this community. Sometimes it's people who want to move into this community. And as I'm looking at this board, it's filled mostly, mostly with people like myself who moved into this community. Billy Yeomans moved into this community. Ed DeNero moved into this community. And when we did, we brought our families with us. We brought kids with us. Um, and in the time since I've been here, you know, we've expanded the police department. We've expanded the fire department. And yes, that has been at cost to taxpayers, but it really is still in service of people who need places to live. And people who come here to better their families and to improve their own situation. So just remember, when we're talking about infrastructure and services, these are all things that grow all the time. And these are things that have to be adjusted over time. If we need additional water sewer capacity, eventually we'll deal with that. If we need additional police and fire, eventually we'll deal with that. But in the meantime, you know, I think we have a moral obligation to make sure that we're doing all we can to house people and improve Grafton's situation in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just respond to that? Yeah, um, I think this board's doing a lot to promote housing development in Grafton. Um, much more so than, than boards in the past. Um, I feel pretty confident in our position and the way that we've been approaching this. Um, for myself, I, I agree with what Mr. Prisby said, which is, um, I trust staff's assessment on this, on this particular matter. Um, I d- I do thank Mr. Yeomans for putting together and putting some, uh, effort into this. And I do have um, ongoing concerns about capacity. Um, but ultimately, um, I'm not going to take a, you know, um, s- somebody's haunt, who's on ZBA's opinion about sewer capacity in Grafton. It just doesn't make sense to me. Um, but it's highlighting the concern and I think that's really important. Um, the, the important thing for me, though, is that, um, you know, Ed mentioned that, uh, adjustments get made to infrastructure over time. Um, I want to make sure that that is as predictable and sustainable from a budgetary standpoint as possible. So, so that's where, when Emery was talking about, we need numbers, that, that's kind of, I think, I hope where the board is at in terms of let's do everything that we can to make sure that we're anticipating those infrastructure needs that we have a funding source in place. And if that includes putting those, um, you know, terms into the, 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 um, lip agreements, um, so that the developers can help fund the infrastructure requirements for the developers that they're putting in, um, we should be doing that. So that, it's one of the things that I think is really difficult for municipal, uh, government is anticipating longer-term infrastructure needs, um, far enough in advance so that you can be planning and strategizing and funding and getting the, the wheels in motion, um, to handle those things before they, they emerge as, um, um, as, you know, what looks like a crisis, even though it's something that probably could have seen coming. So this is, this is one of those things for me. Um, but I am for the moment just sticking with the line that, that we've been told, which is we don't have any, uh, you know, there's no immediate crisis on our doorstep. Um, w- w- we have to do something to understand what the long-term, uh, trend is going to look like. Um, and at what point is it going to, is, is it going to become an issue? Um, so I think it's really important for us to, uh, to pursue that longer-term strategy in terms of water and sewer.
I'll just make one final note on that is that in these two issues, sewer and water, this isn't something that we can build capacity in six months or one year.
Mm-hmm.
You know, changing that infrastructure is a multi-year. And again, I'm no water sewer person, but from what I understand, a, a long process. So we need to be well ahead of the curve in knowing when we're at that five hundred thousand mark or four hundred thousand or whatever it is. So that's where my concern lays, is that we did it, we need a fair amount of, of head time to make any changes in those two departments. So anybody else with public comment online? Anybody else in the room? Great. All right, so we can approve some meeting minutes.
I move the board vote to approve the meeting minutes for February seven, fourteen, twenty-one, and twenty-eight of twenty twenty-three, as written.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, declare the motion carried. And I can take motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, declare the motion carried. Good night, everybody.